Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa. We're all ready when you are.
Thank you, Teresa. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, meeting of the Town of Hilton Head's Planning Commission. We want to welcome all those who are participating via our Zoom platform or joining us via Facebook and remind everyone that the Town Council just extended their prohibition or their mandate that folks while doing in businesses continue to wear their masks and be smart about controlling this contagion. And we invite the public to help us spread that word. So, thank you for that. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. The first item of business we have is to recognize an outgoing member of the Planning Commission. And unfortunately, in these times, we can't see Caroline McVity close up and personal, but she is joining us via Zoom from Maryland. And we wanted to thank Carolyn for her six years of service on the Planning Commission. Carolyn chaired the Rules Committee and was a member of the Gullah Geechee Task Force, and she continues to serve on the Gullah Geechee Task Force even as she goes off the Planning Commission. And again, it's unfortunate that we can't be there to shake your hand and offer our words of congratulations, but we want you to know how much your work on the Commission was appreciated and how much we're going to miss you, Carolyn. And if you unmute yourself, if you'd like to say something.
I just want to say that it has always been my pleasure to serve on the Planning Commission. I had done that in my prior life for 15 years. And it was really special for me, serving with such talented people. And I appreciated having the community always feel that they had a place to voice their opinion in front of the Planning Commission. I have, this was my very best Planning Commission experience in three other Planning Commissions on which I served. And I must say, I miss all of you, and I miss this work. You have been just so supportive and wonderful to me. It's been one of the highlights of my retirement years. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Carolyn. And you know, we wish you well in all of your future endeavors, and do not be a stranger. And we know that we'll see your name up there volunteering in some other capacity in the near future. And hopefully, you've already received your Crystal Award from the town, probably via mail. But we congratulate you on receiving that award for your service on the Commission. Thank you again. And I know I speak for all my fellow commissioners, and it's been wonderful to work with you these past six years. Okay, moving on, we have a new member of the Planning Commission, Stephen Alfred. And Stephen could not join us at our last meeting, and we need to swear him in. So, we have someone here to swear Mr. Alfred in, Stephen Ryan, our staff attorney. Will you do the virtual pleasures of swearing in our newest commissioner?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Alfred, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good to see you, sir. If you would, take the oath of office, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state
that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed
to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed
and that I will, to the best of my ability
and that I will, to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States
and preserve, protect, and defend Constitution of this state and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir, and welcome aboard.
Welcome, Stephen. And again, on behalf of all the commissioners, we welcome you to a seat on the Hilton Head Island Planning Commission. And with that, we will move on. And Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Present. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And are there any other additions to the agenda by staff or any of the commissioners?
No, sir, not on staff's end.
Okay, well, hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Stephen, we'll let you do the second. This will be your first second of a motion for the record. All right, Teresa, would you call the roll? And each commissioner just say yea or nay to the agenda.
Mr. Perry?
Yea.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Yea.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yea.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Alfred? Mr. Theodore?
Yea.
And Mr. Chairman?
Approve.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our special meeting of July 15th, the minutes thereof. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
So I'll move.
Thank you, Leslie. Mark, you've got the second. So Leslie moved, Mark seconded. Teresa, if you recall the roll, and if there are any adjustments to the minutes as we call the roll, please try and in when it is your turn.
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Move.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve.
All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda, it was citizen comments. And Teresa, you are going to fill us in on how that process proceeded.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were several ways that citizens could participate in today's public hearing for the Workforce Housing LMO amendments. Staff received public comments through letters, emails, and the open Town Hall portal through the town's website. Those comments were provided to the Commission yesterday for review and made a part of the official record. Today, we also have six citizens that are signed up to speak during the public hearing. And at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, you can call on each citizen to address the Commission for three minutes.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have no, we have new business, and that is a public hearing on workforce housing LMO amendments. And the Town of Hilton Head Island is proposing to amend Chapters 2, 3, 4, 5, and 10 of the Land Management Ordinance, LMO, to add and revise the following sections. And rather than reading this entire document in, I would ask Teresa that you would encapsulate this and verbatim put this into the minutes of our meeting and any motions that are subsequent thereof. So at this point, I would like to invite Jamie Lapko to speak to us on this particular element. There have been several misconceptions about what this will be able to do. And Jamie, I trust that you will go over them in painstaking detail, so we can put some of these misconceptions to rest. So Jamie, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Planning Commission. We are here today to discuss our workforce housing amendments. And I will get into a presentation, and I'll show how we've gotten to this point, what the amendments are to the Land Management Ordinance, the locations that will be impacted, possibly impacted by this. And then I will go over the public input we've received, the questions we've received, as well as the schedule moving forward. All right. Okay, workforce housing was identified as a priority for Town Council. And once it was identified, we had some stakeholder meetings, some informational community meetings, staff worked with council, and developed a framework of how do we move forward with this. And so the first step was hiring a consultant. So in August in 2018, the town hired Lisa Sturtevant. And as part of that process, again, we held multiple community meetings, stakeholder sessions, talked to other communities about what they've been doing. And the end result was a workforce housing strategic plan was developed. And in November of 2019, Town Council adopted that plan. Now, the one thing I want to point out here is another one of those misconceptions that has come up as part of that. The workforce housing strategic plan is on the town's website. It is part of the workforce housing page. But that's not the whole reason why we're here today. There's a lot of things in that plan, recommendations, steps how to move forward, financing. And so some people have picked out some things on that and are concerned that these amendments somehow allow those to move forward. Specifically, I can tell you that one of the financing options that were listed in the strategic plan was an Airbnb tax. So of course, a lot of the people who have a short-term rental were concerned that that could possibly be impacted, and therefore were concerned that these amendments were allowing that to go forward. So I wanted to address that on the front end, that the workforce housing strategic plan has been adopted, yes. That does not mean that those steps are being put in place at this point. The only step that we're moving forward with is changing the Land Management Ordinance. That does no financial implications with that. So hopefully, that will alleviate one of those concerns. And so with the strategic plan adopted, staff began to work with the Public Planning Committee to set how we're going to move forward. And that is changing the LMO, and what conditions are we going to put in place, what areas are we going to target. And so, working with the Public Planning Committee, we identified three priority areas. And those are Palmetto Bay, Arrow Road, Pope Avenue Corridor, the Squire-Pope Gumtree Road area, and then our Main Street and Opportunity Zone area. And so staff took those and used those as a launching point to draft the LMO amendments. And the intent of these is to provide incentives to develop the promotion of workforce housing on the island. And so at this point, the LMO Committee met back in February initially to review this and had some questions and requested a couple of changes. And then again, we met again on August the 11th. And at this point, they forwarded a recommendation to the Planning Commission for approval. And so we'll move into the actual LMO amendments now. So on the document you received, I'm not going to go through each section. I'm going to go through each chapter or main point to let you know what is covered in those. So Chapter 16.2 Administration is just a small change. We're allowing, if somebody wants to convert a commercial structure to mixed use with workforce housing, we're allowing it to happen as a minor DPR. So that's the only change there. Under 16.16-3, that's pages one through six of your handout, those are our zoning district tables, and those list the permitted uses and the density and the parking requirements for each of our zoning districts. And so those have been updated to add workforce housing as a use, to possibly add multifamily or mixed use, or change them as a conditional use. So that's just showing you the zoning districts where mixed use, multifamily, and workforce housing would be permitted on those tables. Additionally, there are a couple of footnotes that are added that point you to different sections of the LMO to look at the density permitted for mixed use and workforce housing, or for the parking requirements. Then you get into Chapter 16-4, and that's on pages six through eight. Those are our use standards. The use table was updated to again include mixed use, multifamily, and workforce housing in the appropriate zoning districts, whether it's permitted by rider permitted with conditions. You'll see the double underline shows the update to that. And then also, if it's permitted with conditions, we have to add those use-specific conditions within Chapter 4. And so we did add some mixed use conditions that when you convert a commercial space to residential, that you're going to be pointed to a section in Chapter 10 that allows you to use the gross floor area and unit sizes. And also that mixed use developments has to comply with the workforce housing program. The conditions for multifamily is just limited for the CC district, that we're only allowing multifamily to be permitted as part of a commercial conversion project. And then the big change you'll see is Paragraph D on page seven is workforce housing. That is the permitted with condition uses. So if you're in one of the zoning districts that allows workforce housing, it is all permitted with conditions. So you have to comply with all of these conditions in order to be able to utilize the program. And one is, of course, complying with the workforce housing program. Two is that we're allowing it within the PD-1 district, which is our plan unit developments, our gated communities. However, since they are dictated by a master plan, they have to go through a zoning map amendment to allow that use within the PD-1 district. Three is that we, workforce housing is not permitted on parcels within a legally plotted and developed major single-family subdivision. So our big subdivisions like Caroline Isles or China Berry could not go in and do workforce housing because they are an existing major subdivision that is legally plotted and developed. Four, you will see a change to that one based on the LMO Committee, the Main Street District. And I'll show you this on a map in a later slide. The restriction was that we were permitting, not permitting workforce housing on properties on the south side of 278, or properties utilized as a school or fire station. There was discussion at the LMO Committee about using the properties on the south side of 278 for workforce housing to allow it to be eligible. And initially, they were excluded because they weren't considered, they weren't technically within one of the priority areas identified by the Public Planning Committee. But in looking at them, they are still areas that could be utilized. So staff was comfortable including those. So four will be updated to say in the MS District, properties developed for workforce housing should not be permitted on properties currently utilized as a school or fire station. So that would be the only restriction in the MS District. And the other ones are various restrictions of trying to limit vehicular access in the Stony District, no access from 278. In the WMU District, no access from Marshland Road. LC District, no access to 278 between Wexford Drive and Singleton Beach. In RM4, no access to Jonesville Spanish Wells and Marshland Road. And then in the RM8 District, no access to Point Comfort Spanish Wells and 278. And those were our efforts to limit workforce housing to certain portions of the island within the priority areas. We had to do this based on a zoning district. So we couldn't just pick and choose certain properties where it would work and where it wouldn't work. We had to use a zoning district and then use criteria to narrow it down to try to keep the areas within the priority areas. So that's the Chapter 4. Now, Section 164105 is a brand-new section, and it's the meat of a lot of this because that's the actual workforce housing program itself. So we'll go through each of those. Paragraph A is, covers density. And the program allows a bonus density, and that's the incentive for people to develop workforce housing. So for each zoning district, they have a base density that's permitted, whether it's four units per acre or up to 16 units per acre. And we're allowing you to get a bonus of up 100% above that base residential density. And it requires that you have a 25% minimum bonus density to participate in the program. So for every two of the bonus units you get, one of them has to be a workforce housing unit. And there is a maximum on the density, though, that you're only allowed up to 24 units per acre. For commercial conversion, there is also a density placed in there, and it's explained in greater detail in Chapter 10. But if you have an existing commercial space and you want to convert that over to workforce housing, if you include at least 20% workforce housing units, we'll give you a reduction in your unit sizes. And up to 50% of the units can be a micro efficiency or a studio unit for using smaller sizes. For Paragraph B, this is our standards for the units. And this really covers the appearance of the units. We want to make sure that a market rate and workforce housing units are under the same standards, same finishes, they look the same on the outside, on the inside. They have a range of bedrooms and sizes, that they are all built, intermingled, that they're not clustered in one area or the other, that we really want a mixed development together, that we don't want to differentiate between the workforce housing unit and our market rate unit. Additionally, with that, we have requirements for an owner-occupied unit, as well as a rental unit, that they have to sign a workforce housing agreement with the town. And that will cover things like the number of units that will be in the development, the square footage of the units, the number of bedrooms in those units. It requires that the units remain affordable for a period of 30 years, and that a certificate of occupancy cannot be issued until we have this agreement in place. There also is a requirement for restrictive covenants to be placed on the property, for the town to have legal recourse for noncompliance. And the covenants are really for a couple of things. It's the affordability period of 30 years. And then for an owner-occupied unit, there is a household income requirement that you can earn up to 80% to 100% of the median, area median income for Beaufort County. Now, the area median income is determined by HUD each year and issued to us. So that will be something we'll change every year. And so if you earn between 80% and 100% of the area median income for Beaufort County, you would qualify to purchase one of the workforce housing units. And as part of that, if you wanted to purchase a unit, you have to fill out a certificate of eligibility and turn that into the town to verify that you meet the requirements before you're able to purchase the unit. It's similar for the rental units, that the owner of the property would have to put covenants on the property, again, retaining the 30-year affordability period. And also, the rental area median income is reduced to 60% to 80% of our area median income for a rental unit. Moving on to C is our income employment regulations. This is where the certificate of eligibility comes in, that there's two requirements, and that's, one is a member of the household is required to work at a lawfully licensed business within the Town of Hilton Head Island. And second, they have to meet the income requirements of the household, whether it's the 60% to 80% or the 80% to 100%. So each time you rent to someone, a certificate of eligibility would have to come in, meeting those requirements. Each time a unit is sold, you would have to fill out a certificate of eligibility to ensure that whoever is purchasing the property still meets the requirements. Moving on to D, occupancy and eligibility. The units are expected to be your primary sole residence. It's not something you can get and then sublease out. And again, the AMI requirements are there. The resale price and rental rates are the last two paragraphs within this. The resale price is going to be determined by, again, the Housing and Urban Development annual household income limits. And we'll work out the specifics of that. We'll have a table each year that basically says based on the number of people in the household, this is the amount that they can afford to purchase a home. And then we'll have that. We've added a provision to lower the HOA fees, if there happens to be a homeowners association, to a maximum of 75% of what will be charged for a market rate owner. And we've also added provisions for the resale. If somebody purchased an affordable unit and wanted to resell it, they would have the ability to increase the price above the initial purchase price with closing costs and commissions. And if they've made improvements to the property, inflation factors, things like that, so they're not stuck with one price at the time of resale. Rental rates, we've taken that and just made a simple equation for that, that the maximum rental rate is going to be 80% of the area median income for that year. Then you multiply that by 30%, which is where you end up being cost burdened. And then you divide that by 12, and that gets you your monthly rental rate. All right, moving into Chapter 5, the only thing in Chapter 5 is our parking requirements. And with workforce housing, whether it is a mixed-use development, multifamily, or straight-up workforce housing, we have allowed the applicant to submit parking data for that. There's no hard-and-fast number of a minimum parking required. We wanted to give them flexibility to require less parking, should they feel that's necessary. Chapter 10, we have changed the rules of measurements. This is where we add the commercial conversion in place, to where if you've got an existing commercial building, you can use the footprint of that building and the gross floor area and convert that into residential. And there wouldn't be a per-unit, a unit-per-acre density with that. You would use the table on page 14 and have the flexibility to create what you could within that commercial space. And if, again, if you use workforce housing, give us 20% workforce housing within those units, you can use the reduced square footage numbers, and as well as including the micro efficiency and studio units. All right, Section 1610103 is our use classifications, use types, and definitions. Those are simply updated to add workforce housing as a residential use, and a definition of workforce housing, that housing that is affordable at 60% to 100% of the area median income for Beaufort County. Then we have our table of abbreviations, where we've added area median income, certificate of eligibility, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and workforce housing as abbreviations. And then we've dated definitions for area median income, density bonus, household, and household income. Now, I want to get into the locations, because as most of you probably have been following along, this started out as an overlay district when it was first created. And due to some problems with that, we went to creating it as a use within certain zoning districts. And so that's created as a conditional use. And we kept similar areas. We looked at the priority areas, whether it was an overlay or the zoning districts, and kept a similar areas. And those areas were identified due to their proximity to transportation and unemployment centers, and also our opportunity zone, where we can catalyze developments. And I mean, it's a big number, but it says approximately 18 acres of property where workforce housing could be permitted with conditions. So here's the map that was sent out with the notices. We sent out over 4,000 notices to these properties that are identified in purple, not as a courtesy to let people know this was happening, to help answer some questions and to make people more aware. So the first thing I will say is this map is not going to be adopted. This is not something that's hard and fast and is going to be part of the Land Management Ordinance. This was just a guide to let people know that looking at the zoning districts where it would be permitted, and meeting the conditions of pulling out the major single-family subdivisions, pulling out the location requirements, these are the areas where it could possibly be permitted. And a lot of people had questions, well, why am I included? Or why is this area included? This area is already developed. So there are several areas where we understand that things are already developed. And so when you're looking at a zoning district to change things, we can't pick and choose this property or that property. We had to look at the zoning district as a whole and create conditions that will be legally defensible. And so we couldn't spot zone, which means if there's a place like Brighton Bay and Palmetto Bay Marina that we know is probably not feasible for use of workforce housing because they're condos and individually owned, there wasn't a justification to pull that out as part of, it would be more like a spot zoning type situation. So we had to include that because it's within the zoning district. And then this was the map I showed you, I told you I would show later. This is the Main Street area. So the area in purple was the areas that were already included within the workforce housing. The areas in pink were the properties that the LMO Committee had asked if we could include those. And so there was not a concern from staff with including those. So moving forward, these areas will be included as part of the workforce housing. And you'll see the one white parcel in the area, that is actually the early childhood center, so it would be excluded. All right, so now we'll get into the public inputs. The town did send out substantial amount of letters. We had the open town hall forum opened for a general topic, as well as the LMO committee and the planning commission, and you've received comments related to that. Received dozens of calls and emails, most of them just concerned, more confused about what the process is and what is this. And so we covered what property is included and why. Why are commercial properties included? There's a lot of people concerned about Main Street. Well, Main Street currently allows residential as it is if they wanted to redevelop, so that's one thing. But adding workforce housing is just an additional option of residential. But the existing commercial spaces are there because of the commercial conversion. If there is an underutilized office space within the area, they could possibly convert that to workforce housing. So that's why some of the commercial spaces are there. It's not the intent that we expect them to redevelop to an apartment building. But it is possible that some of those spaces, even a secondary floor, could be developed for workforce housing. How does this impact my property? Is my property required to become workforce housing? Is my property being rezoned? A lot of the concern is because somebody received a letter, they think their property's being rezoned. That's not the case. The base zoning district of everyone's property will stay the same. The number of uses, the types of uses that allow on the property are still the same. The only thing that is changing is an additional use is being added to the list of uses that are permitted on those properties. And it's the owner's choice whether they participate in that program. It's completely voluntary. Each property owner has the choice to develop their property how they choose. And it can be commercial and it could be residential based on the uses that are permitted on their property. So no one is being rezoned, no property is required to be workforce housing, no properties are being changed to workforce housing. It's just an additional opportunity for properties within the area to develop workforce housing, should they choose. We talked about some of the incentives, which is the density bonus is the major incentive in the LMO. There are not any financial incentives at this point. We have not gotten into that. There are many things in the workforce housing strategic plan talking about that, but that's not something that is part of this discussion. Right now, we're just looking at providing an incentive within the land management ordinance to promote the development of workforce housing. What projects are planned? There are none at this point. Bringing this forward didn't mean that we had a project in the works or that something was coming down the road. We were just trying to meet a need that was identified as a priority by council. The next one is, is a big one, is low income or section eight housing? No, it is not. Workforce housing is what it is, and it's 60 to 80% of the area median income. And so one of the handouts you got was from the Beaufort County Housing Authority, and it included the area median income, which was effective May 1st of 2020. And so for a family of four, at 80% of our area median income is $65,200. So that's what a family of four would be expected to earn in order to rent one of the units on the island. The biggest questions that I've received more recently is impacts on infrastructure, natural resources, if a project were to be developed. Now, these projects are not exempt from the rest of the land management ordinance. This is actually an additional layer of requirements for them. Not only do they have to meet the requirements of the workforce housing program, but they still have to get a development plan review and they still have to get a subdivision and meet all of the requirements, design requirements of the land management ordinance, including height. There won't be any higher buildings. The base zoning district heights stay the same, so there won't be any high rises. They still have to protect trees and wetlands, and they still have to meet the infrastructure. If the water and sewer lines in the area are not enough for what the development will serve, then they have to upgrade those as part of the development. Let's see what else. I think I covered everything in there. Let's move on. The last thing is about existing developments. A lot of questions about those as well. I own a unit in Brighton Bay. I own a unit in Cordillo Courts. Can my neighbor convert to workforce housing and make their unit into four units? The answer is, is no. Individual units within an existing multifamily developments are not eligible to participate in this. This is meant for a full structure, a redevelopment, a new development. The same thing goes for our subdivisions. If you're in an existing major single-family subdivision, you're not eligible for this. That goes for our planning developments as well. There was concern that a lot of those have major subdivisions within them, so we wanted to make it clear that if you have a multifamily building or an existing single-family subdivision in the planning development district, they're also ineligible for this. This is really meant for our underperforming commercial spaces or our vacant blocks that are still available or properties that are underutilized at this point. It could possibly add additional density to work in the workforce housing program. One last question that did come up, that I wanted to make sure that we addressed, was the use of manufactured homes in the program. And at this point, we don't regulate the type of unit that it is. So the intent is at this point that a manufactured home could be used for this program. I think I covered most of the questions that have come up. This is the path forward. Today is the public hearing where the planning commission will make a recommendation forward to town council. The next steps is the public planning committee will be on August the 27th at 3:00 PM, and then there'll be a briefing before town council, and then there will be two readings of an ordinance in October with possible adoption October 20th for this moving forward. And I think that's it, unless there are, open it up to questions from the planning commission.
Jamie, I know that this went to the LMO committee, and I take it that the LMO committee, and Leslie, you can chime in here, with the suggested changes that were presented today, is endorsing this to the commission?
Yes, that's true. I mean, this has been pending for a while because of the pandemic, but in the meantime, staff had addressed all the concerns that had come up in our previous meetings. The one, one comment that I want to add, I don't know if it's a question or what, but Jamie, is there any plan to at some point reevaluate down the road? I mean, right now, we're given the opportunity for a lot of land to be converted and, you know, you hope that it happens, but supposing down the road too much happens, what recourse is there?
Absolutely. The LMO is a living document, as you all know, and if we find that it is underutilized or utilized in a manner that wasn't intended, then we would bring forward amendments to modify the program.
With that given, yes, the subcommittee has forwarded it on to the planning commission to endorse and forward on to the township council.
Okay, commissioners, what I'd like to do at this point is allow our citizens who've been waiting patiently, I think we have six signed up to speak, allow them to speak, and then we will go through two rounds of questions from the commissioners and comments from the commissioners. If that is agreeable, we'll proceed with a citizen comment. And I have six citizens signed up. The first one is Alina Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear, ma'am. Please proceed.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to address my concerns. My first question is, before I get into my discussion, my first question is, do I have the opportunity to ask questions and get answers on this call?
You have the opportunity to ask questions, but you have three minutes, so you're going to be using that time. But if you ask the question, I believe Jamie or one of the commissioners will be happy to answer that after your presentation.
Sounds great. Okay, I think we can all agree that COVID-19 has significantly affected our tourism, so we're not seeing our typical vacation seasonal traffic patterns now. You know, quite frankly, in the words of the island packet, tourism has fallen off the cliff. When we get ahead of this pandemic and begin to see things normalize, traffic on Hilton Head will begin again. Where I am deeply concerned is with the notion of building even more and building, I'm using that word real loosely because some of this is conversion, in the corridor between the Seapine Circle and Caligny. I'm a current homeowner at Shipyard and have been here since 2010. Really, during that time, I've seen tremendous change to the south end of the island. Additional traffic in the Seapine Circle is clearly recognized, additional traffic to Pope Avenue, building of a college campus for USC, building of a hotel with variances on height, forcing increased occupancy, building of a large park, reduction in beach parking, which is causing more circling of traffic trying to find a parking space, addition of traffic like crosswalks for pedestrians, which, by the way, I agree with that, it just does slow down the traffic. Allowance of golf carts on Pope Avenue clearly slows down traffic. And reduction of speed limits on Pope Avenue, and I assume that this was approved by the town council as a result of additional congestion demanding greater speed. There has been recognition by the town leaders that the traffic on the south end is growing, and as such, you initiated a study to determine courses of action. While on the other hand, we're now continuing to approve projects that are resulting in increased traffic. So really, my specific questions are, do the citizens have an opportunity to influence this current proposal on the table? And I realize it's an LMO proposal, but it is the first steps in converting to workforce corridor. Specifically, I'm interested in the corridor between Seapines and Caligny, where this traffic exists. So that's my first question. I'll outline my four questions, and then I guess if I have time, you can approach them. Or if someone could take those down and maybe answer them specifically, I'll be more than glad to send it to anyone. How many units are currently anticipated to be in the Waterside and Executive Park area, which I think is, you know, the major congestion there? My third question is, and it's probably a difficult one to answer, but what assurances does the workforce housing program have that residents of these units will indeed work on Hilton Head, specifically in the industries that are suffering for employees such as hospitality, restaurants? Because quite frankly, if there are no assurances, it's very nice to live on Hilton Head at a reduced price and commute off island to higher paying jobs, especially when you're going against traffic. And my last question is, what has become of the traffic study that urgently wanted to address traffic in this specific area? And the reason I'm outlining that as a question is, you know, based on what I just communicated on the additional infrastructures that have gone up, you know, most recently in this corridor, just seeming, seems to me that adding additional residents in this area clearly will lead to additional traffic.
Need you to wrap it up.
I got it. That's it. I'm done.
All right, thank you so much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. And I see Jamie taking notes as you're speaking, and I'm sure that she will answer those questions once we go through all the other public comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your participation. Next individual I have is Ann King. Ann, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Oh, well, thank you. Welcome to our meeting. We can all hear you. Your three minutes have started, and please add your comments.
Oh, thank you for having me and thank you for the information in the meeting. And I just, everything was great and clarified, except one thing. I just need clarification on Marshland Road. Is Marshland Road included or not included in this program?
Was that your only comment, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, well, we will, if you're finished, we will move on. And again, I see Jamie taking notes, and we will address that question when we complete all of the public input. Thank you for your participation and your comment.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, next we have Tad Seeger. And is Tad on the line? Okay, I'm not hearing Tad, so I'm going to move on to Karen Garganzoni. And Karen, if I butchered your name, I apologize. Is Karen on the line?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome to the meeting. We appreciate your participation, Karen.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I oppose the amendment to the LMO to add workforce housing because of the following reasons. It will lower my property value, discourage any resale, possibly bring crime and drugs, and overpopulate the schools and requiring additional schools, which will raise property taxes. I have a question. Would you oppose or be in favor of rezoning for workforce housing in your own community? Please do the right thing for the property owners of Brighton Bay and vote no for the recommendation of the LMO amendment to add workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments there. Much appreciated. All right, next we have, we have Beryl Title. And Beryl, again, if I butchered your name, I apologize. Is Beryl on the line? Okay, I'm not hearing Beryl last. We have Robert Ayulow. Is Robert on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We certainly can, Robert. Welcome to the meeting and please, we appreciate your comments, and you have the floor.
Good morning, everybody. Question I had with the LMO is, I received a letter, obviously, with being in 350 feet of a possible structure that people can sell their properties. She was very thorough about explaining that. The only thing, I'm not sure if the planning board here understands, on Beach City Road, right by the airport, Finch Street is a light commercial park. It is a private road from basically the airport to the NTB Tire Place. This belongs to the Beach City Center Owners Association. And our requirements and our covenants in the board of our private road has no housing on it for people to come in and build structures and live in, whether it's LMO or it's, people want to put up a trailer for somebody to live in, because it is a one-way-in-and-one-way-out street. I think that the commercial park of Finch Street and the front edge of Beach City Road, which are all a property association, should be off the table.
Robert? Those conclude your comments, Robert?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you. We very much appreciate that. I see Jamie taking notes and did, is Beryl or Tad on the line? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do see Beryl Title on the line. She may need to unmute on her end.
Okay. Beryl, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? This is Beryl Title.
Yes, Beryl, thank you. We've
Oh, great.
gotten through our technical glitch. Welcome to the meeting and
Well, thank you.
We appreciate your participation and you have the floor.
Thank you. Maybe I missed a piece of this, but I just wanted to find out, what is the ability to make sure that if a, an owner has property, sells it, and that it is able to remain affordable as opposed to selling it, making this profit, or turning it into not workforce housing? So that's a question, you know, I just needed a little more clarification on. And how will that be checked up on to make sure that if something gets sold, a unit gets sold, that it will stay workforce?
And I know that Jamie covered your particular question in her presentation, and I'm sure she'll be happy to go over it again, just to clarify it. And, you know, that ends our citizen comment, and we will close the public hearing. And Jamie, before we go around and have the commissioners ask questions and make comments, if you could answer some of the questions that were raised during the public comment period, I think it would be enlightening for all of us, as well as the participants in the public process.
Sure, absolutely. For the first one, can you change the area of Seapines and Caligny? Yes, the Planning Commission can recommend that we look at modifying any one of the areas that are or not, are not included, but that would have to be a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then staff would research it as it goes forward to town council. The number of units anticipated, there's no way to know that, unfortunately, so I can't give you an answer on that. Assurances, but they work on Hilton Head? Absolutely. Each unit is required, whether at rental or ownership, to fill out a certificate of eligibility that will detail their income, as well as where they are a place of employment. At least one person within the household is required to work at a legally licensed business within the town of Hilton Head Island. Traffic studies, we have not looked at that. The LMO requires a traffic study for a certain size development, but we have not looked back at the impacts of what this could potentially do, because we're not sure what could be developed at this point. Is Marshland Road included? At this point, Marshland Road is not included within the areas that would be permitted to use for workforce housing. No questions on that one. When you sell a property, right now, the town is going to be the person administering this. There may be in the future an outside organization, a nonprofit, that will maintain this program, but at this point, it will remain a town function. So there will be checks done, whether it's annually with rental units. We will be keeping up with the leased units and sending out reminders that should you change occupants, you will be required to fill out a certificate of eligibility for each new occupant. We will follow up on any ownership units to make sure that prior to them being sold, that they, again, fulfill the requirements. And because there are covenants on the property, the town does have legal recourse to make sure the units remain affordable for a period of 30 years, and that the people occupying them meet the eligibility requirements for income and employment. And as for Finch Street, it's the same with any property. If there are private covenants that would prohibit you from using it for workforce housing, then that will take place over top of the LMO. You could not use workforce housing just because the Land Management Ordinance allows it. If the covenants restrict it from housing, then you would not be eligible for it. But again, we had to pick areas based on zoning districts. We couldn't just pick areas that we thought would be most conducive for workforce housing. So that's why you see the areas of light commercial Long Beach City included for the possibility of conversion to housing if it were permitted by their covenants. I think that's everything.
We thank you for providing those answers, Jamie. Teresa, at this time, can we go in order? And Teresa will call your name, and if you have a comment or a question for Jamie or anyone else, just want to make a comment. When it's your turn, please enlighten us with your wisdom. So Teresa, would you go through the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry.
Well, Peter, I don't know if there's any wisdom, but I do have a question, and it's kind of, it's mainly geared towards that Pope Avenue corridor. Has there been any thought or study into the conversion of, or the increase in traffic flow, not traffic flow, but individuals between a conversion of commercial structures or existing residential structures, you know, Cordello Courts and those types of units into affordable housing? What the number of units could be and what that might have an impact on, on that South End?
When it comes to conversion, there are so many different aspects and different sizes of units, it's uncertain of what the impact of that could be.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand that. I do want to make a comment in that I think that this document is well done, and is very protective of the areas, and thus taking into consideration a lot of the questions that were asked, and addresses those very directly. And I'll make one comment, back in the early days of development in the late 50s, early 60s, the developers did come in and build affordable housing on the island because there was a lack of that. So it's not something new to the island, it's something that we've had in the past. And I think for our quality of life, not only for our residents, but also for our, you know, the people that are looking to come here, for our employers, for everybody else, that some of this adoption, some of these areas are needed to have that workforce availability so that we all have that quality of life on this island. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Stevens.
Unmute yourself, Levon.
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jamie, I think that's a lot of good work, covered a lot of ground, and it did answer a lot of questions, and of course, there's always going to be questions that we have as unique situations come up. I will reiterate that what Jamie said, that this is a living document, and that we will have to look at it as we have different situations that come up. I did take the time to read through a lot of our public comment and thank all of those citizens for submitting their thoughts and questions. I think we've addressed most of them. I haven't had the opportunity to speak with a few people around the community as well to get a little input on this, and I've gotten a few phone calls from people asking, what is this workforce housing all about, and what these amendments might mean to different parts of the community. I won't bore you with the history of the island, because I'm not the historian, but there seems to be a lot of discussion about what the culture of the island is, and historically what people have found when they moved here, whether it was last year, five years ago, or 10 to 15 years ago. And there seems to be some fears about property values and some preconceived notions about the, what will happen in some of these workforce housing developments if and when they are come to fruition. And I would encourage us, as always, to remember that we are a diverse island, and that we tend to have that slam-the-door-shut mentality, wants me move here, we don't want anybody else to come. I hope we're not talking about putting up a gate at the bridge and having to get a pass to come on to Hilton Head Island, or having to be in one particular income bracket. That just leads me into shortening that discussion for you about folks who were actually here before the bridge came, and we didn't have a lot of these issues before there was the bridge. We didn't have concerns about crime, and there was a way of life that people enjoyed, and we certainly had more property in a lot of our native island areas. As you know, I'm working with the Gulliguchi Task Force to help preserve that culture. So those are my concerns coming from that perspective, as far as what people who are already here and have been here for generations, and what they can do with some of their properties and to participate economically and to develop their properties or convert them into take advantage of some of these LMO changes as it relates to workforce housing. I think Jamie answered a couple of those as far as the large tracts and what would be allowed in up to 24 units, I believe you said, per acre on some of the larger tracts. One of the questions I have, Jamie, is also about the properties that are labeled as like transfer development rights properties, and also, if there are properties that have abided by the LMO previously in developing these places where there's affordable housing before it was labeled affordable housing, do people have the opportunity to come back in and reapply under these new LMO amendments? I believe you said that some of the PUDs would be excluded from that, but some folks may have already abided by what they did in development previously. Will they have the opportunity to come back and be reconsidered under these new LMO changes? The biggest question that we have about affordable housing relates to people being able to afford to live here, and that is probably a larger discussion than this body can take on, but it certainly goes to what our minimum wages are and what people are making in their jobs. It is my understanding that if people were making a decent salary, they could afford to pay for a place to live, and we wouldn't have as many of the concerns about crime and property values and things like that. So again, I encourage us to be open-minded when we talk about a diverse and inclusive And before I go any further, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the work and contributions of Caroline McVitty. I don't know if she's still on the call, I guess, after we recognize that she didn't have to stay in the meeting. But I do appreciate working with her, and I look forward to continue working with her with our Gulliguchi Task Force. And I believe that, oh, the other question I have was about the requirement for individuals to work on Hilton Head if they, to take advantage of these workforce houses. I don't know how we monitor that. If someone starts off with a job on Hilton Head and they are in a workforce housing development, and they lose that job and take a job somewhere else, does that disqualify them? Do they have to move out? Or how do we force that? That's a big question that I have. And I think that a lot of this does relate to how we can take advantage of some of the properties already in existence here as far as our historic neighborhoods and native islanders. I'm glad that you are addressing the question about manufactured homes, as there are several people around the area on the island that have mobile home parks, and they may be in proximity to some other properties that cause some concern for folks. But again, that is something that I think that we're going to have to take a look at, and it's my understanding that we're keeping a lot of those developments away from some named major arterials. So they would be kind of out of sight, but then they're always going to, somebody, everybody has to be next to somebody. Okay? So none of us, we live on an island, but none of us are an island, so they will land somewhere, I'm sure. And I hope that this LMO, or work this LMO committee and the Planning Commission will continue to work along with Dr. DeBose and our Gulliguchi Task Forces. I think a lot of these issues are going to be related to the work that we're doing with the task force, and that's where a lot of these questions come to me, in asking about workforce housing, what does it mean, and what can I do with my property? And I believe that that is all that I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go ahead and address his questions, or wait till all of the questions that have been submitted?
Go ahead and address those questions, Jamie.
Okay. Transfer development rights is a tricky one, Mr. Stevens. I think there's only probably one that I'm aware of on the island with the Hudson property. Those are very specific legal documents that are put in place and cover the density that's there. I believe the transfer development rights would preempt whatever's going on with workforce housing, but there are so few of those on the island that I'm not sure that it would impact what's going on with workforce housing. As for current developments, the town has previously had affordable housing or workforce housing or moderate income programs. All of those programs have been repealed, and no units currently remain in those programs. But there may be what we deem as affordable housing that was done privately, that was done privately, not through a town program. So absolutely, they would have the ability to redevelop and take advantage of the current program. Any property would. Individuals working on the island, we only check that when they bring in the certificate of eligibility, and so if they happen to lose their job two days after they bring in their certificate, we won't be necessarily checking up on that, but when they renew their lease or when they sell the house, we will be at that point, and we will be as flexible as we possibly can with people should they happen to lose their position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Mr. Chairman, next up, we have Ms. McGowan.
Thank you. Leslie?
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this point, but, because I've certainly had ample opportunity, but I have to applaud the town of Hilton Head for the transparency on this matter. I think over 4,000 property owners were noticed way beyond what was even required, because it's not a zoning change, it's just a change to the use groups within the zones. And I just want to reiterate, I know that because of that notice, a lot of people think this is no income housing, but we have to, have to remember, this is low, this is moderate, low moderate income housing. These are people who are working. So I think that you can't, you just can't say that enough. This is not for people who are not working. At that, I have no other comments right now.
Thank you, Leslie. Teresa?
Mr. O'Neil.
Mark, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
I've been zooming so long, I should know that by now. Jamie, I just wanted to compliment you and your team on this piece of work. Certainly, as we go through it, you can get most of your questions answered. Kind of a general question here, I did read the comments carefully, and I did see that you addressed most of the comments in your presentation. Are there any that stand out for you that, given all the discussion we've had and all the work you've done, that still have not been mitigated in some way?
No, sir. There's nothing that specifically stands out. We went to great lengths to research in writing this, and even with the time off for the pandemic between the LMO committee meetings, I took a lot of opportunity to research to try and make sure we addressed pretty well every concern that we possibly could.
Okay, good. Thank you. The other question follows Levon's question about the fact, what happens if someone loses their job, which in this category of service workers especially, the turnover rate is very high, and I just want to make sure that we're not temporarily solving a problem and then having to go back and address it. So what you were really saying is that there is no enforcement of this, except at the time of sale or renewal of the rental?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then finally, do we have, through all our studies, do we have any idea of the number of workers in the market that we're trying to address who meet the criteria either of purchase or rental? Have we done any studies on that?
It's not something that we have available today, but I believe that's something we may have available that we can provide to you.
Okay. Yeah, it's really just, you know, the sensitivity here, are we meeting the needs of the people that can afford, you know, this type of housing to keep their jobs? That's all. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Teresa, I believe Michael Scanlon's up next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Michael, the floor is yours.
First of all, as a member of the LMO committee under our leadership of Leslie, we, I've become very familiar with what we're trying to accomplish here. And I do want to say that some of the
It's not something that we have available today, but I believe that something we may have available that we can provide to you.
Okay. Yeah, it's really just, you know, the sensitivity here. Are we meeting the needs of the people that can afford, you know, this type of housing to keep their jobs? That's all. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Teresa, I believe Michael Scanlon's up next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Michael, the floor is yours.
First of all, as a member of the LMO committee under our leadership of Leslie, we, I've become very familiar with what we're trying to accomplish here. And I do want to say that some of the comments that our Vice Chairman Levon has stated, I would concur with, and I want to make sure that we don't, you know, we're careful about how we proceed through this whole process. The staff has done really remarkable work here. And I know it may seem bureaucratic in the sense of all the different things that have to be done, but I think that the end game is the worthy cause we're working toward, and that I think it will eventually help us to solve the problem of workforce housing on the island. And so I, you know, I do support the amendments and would be happy to vote for them. Now, I did, I think our former Chair of the Planning Commission, Alex Brown, had a concern, and I just wonder if Dingby or the staff has had a chance to visit with him about it, and wonder if there's any resolution to his concern.
I have talked to Mr. Brown. Is that the concern about manufactured homes, or is it something else?
About renting, yes, renting space on private property that could be considered workforce housing.
Yes, we have talked to him about it. And while we don't have the specifics worked out at this point, it is our intent to work through that and allow manufactured homes to be used, whether it's rental of the home or the land. But we still have to work out the specifics of how we could get that to work.
Okay, fair enough. With that, Mr. Chairman, I conclude my remark.
Thank you, Michael, for those remarks. And Teresa, I believe Stephen is up next. Stephen Alfred. Stephen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First, Jamie, thanks for that presentation. It found me very helpful. Two questions. Is there an impact of, potential impact of bankruptcy on the part of either the developer owner or individual owner of the unit? Is it annihilation of the work of restrictions?
When looking into that and discussing it with legal, when it comes to foreclosures and bankruptcies, unless there is something in state law that would allow the affordability term to survive the bankruptcy or foreclosure, then we would lose those units, the affordability term, should a unit go into foreclosure or bankruptcy. The state of South Carolina doesn't have that.
That would be true for a unit by the developer or directly owned by.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part of your question. You cut out on us.
For a unit that has been sold by the developer to a town, or owner of the unit goes bankrupt, that unit would also fall out of the restrictions of work.
When it comes to developer portion, you're still cutting in and out, so I'm going to try and think and interpret. If it's privately owned, yes, it's not going to survive the affordability term. If the developer goes bankrupt, that's something we would have to look into legal-wise to see if the units would still be able to survive the bankruptcy. There is some cases where if a bank were to take over, that the bank would then become the new owner and still be able to survive the affordability term, but that's something we would still have to look into to see if in that specific situation that the units would be able to survive that.
Thank you. Is there any reason to be concerned about the possibility of overcrowding? Having too many people in a particular?
The town has not, in the past, regulated the occupancy of any types of units on the island, and we have, again, chosen to continue down that path and not do that for workforce housing as well.
Thank you. That's all for the moment.
Thank you, Stephen. And last but not least, Todd Theodore. Unmute yourself, Todd. There you go.
Thank you. Reiterate what everybody else has said, especially Levon. And thank you, Jamie, and town staff, because it's a lot of hard work to get to where we are and our committee as well. I'm on the LMO committee and have been part of the process, so very familiar with the changes. I would address, and I can't remember, Jamie, if you addressed it, but in terms of traffic, if there's workers that live on the island, it actually reduces the volume of traffic because everybody is commuting to the island. And on the north end especially, every morning and every evening, there's people coming and leaving the island that work here every day. So it would actually improve traffic additions. So I wanted to point that out. And then possibly to correct what you said, Jamie, looking at the map, there are some areas along Marshland, especially between Legamutton and Matthews, that appear to be on the map that are in that area. So there are some areas on Marshland. And then it looked like to me, the Finch Road comment, the lots that were highlighted, you know, whether they have access off of Beach City Road or not, I don't know, but it looks like those lots all front Beach City, so they would have access off of that if Finch Road has a restriction of residential use potentially. So that was just something I noticed as kind of a response to the public question. But I just, again, compliment town staff on where we are. I'm on the kind of the development side of the island, and it hurts to see commercial especially is suffering right now. The Steinmark, I noticed this past week that Steinmark's closing. So it's kind of hard to imagine affordable housing overcrowding the island. I'm more concerned about the loss of businesses at this point in time. But hopefully, as this pandemic gets resolved and we get back to normal lives, that hopefully there's opportunities for people to be able to live on the island and work on the island, and especially in an affordable way where young families with kids can live on the island as well. So I think this is a great step into the future for the island. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Todd. And I'll kind of wrap up the first round. This has been a very, very long journey where the town council realized that this was a very, very important aspect in a deficit in our community. And they did hire a consultant who provided a lot of the groundwork and a lot of the recommendations, not all of which we're considering today, to get to this first step. And Jamie, I'm going to join with all my colleagues who have complimented you and your staff, and who've worked so hard on this and covering all the bases and the openness in which this has been conducted. And, you know, want to reiterate, you know, several of the comments of my fellow commissioners. Todd indicated that, you know, this would reduce traffic, and yes, it would. We wouldn't have traffic coming over the bridge. These were folks, and these are primarily in business hubs where they could live close to where they work and could, in many cases, either walk or ride a bike, or it'd be a very, very short commute for them to get to their place of business, their place of work. Being an employer of over 100 people in Hilton Head Plantation, I am very cognizant of the premium one has to pay to have a worker commute every day over the bridge. And we do have to, you know, pay that premium. And it is still a huge struggle to find qualified folks, and it's only going to get more difficult as the I-95 corridor, which is scheduled to be developed en masse, gets developed, and workers find it easier to work in those areas and not make the commute all the way through Bluffton, through Hardyville, onto the island, and in some cases, all the way down to Caligny. So, you know, this is a definite need. Alan also talked about the fact that the original developer built workforce housing, and that is very, very true. And again, we have in our community a place called Spring Lake Clusters, which was the original workforce housing, and today remains an affordable option for folks who live in our community. So, you know, these are all factors that are playing into this move forward. And it is, you know, does not mean that every place on the map is going to become workforce housing. There are very, very strict procedures that have to be followed. You know, yes, we can go back and look at this again. If we find this in some cases in overabundance, which I highly doubt, or there needs to be tweaked, and whenever we pass an ordinance, we find that there may be an unintended consequence and may need to go back to that. And Levon, I want to reiterate and strengthen, you know, what you have worked forward. In many cases, this is an opportunity for native islanders who are struggling to hang on to their land. And they can use this to develop their land in an affordable way and to derive some income that would allow them to stay on their land and continue that heritage. So very much in favor of that process, and know that that was a concern of the Gulligici Task Force, and this will hopefully assist in that particular venture. So those are my comments. And Teresa, why don't we go through the roll one more time before we try to move this item to the next step in the process?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I just have one quick thing to add is, you know, we always talk about hospitality, you know, the restaurants, the hotels, but let's not forget the teachers that are here that are driving over from Beaufort. And while right now there's been somewhat of a decrease in students at the schools, we know that as things come back around and the economy gets back to where it was, that the schools will increase. We're still short on teachers. And there's other industries as well, nurses in the medical fields whereby those just out of college, you know, need the affordable aspect. And we need to have those individuals living on the island. And, you know, the goal is for them to improve their lives, move on to bigger houses, you know, get married and everything else. But it is a good segue to addressing complete workforce on Hilton Head, not just one segment. It also addresses the, you know, the average age of the island, which is something else that makes it a more inclusive place to be and more of a destination. So I just kind of want to put that out there. I agree with everybody else's comments. Jamie, again, I just want to say that I think the document is well done. It well reads, and it addresses a lot of different issues. So thank you very much. And that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alan.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. I was going to bring up that as well. So you've already mentioned that as far as what we perceive as affordable housing and sometimes misconstrued as low-income housing, and that's probably not the right term, because there's so many people that need to be able to live on the island. And what we perceive as affordable, a lot of times, we're already in a community that has a lot of high-end properties. So we do have a lot of people in our middle class who would appreciate what affordable housing is. And also, as far as addressing some of the fears of our public and our community, I'm reminded that in a lot of developments, there have been management styles and policies put in place by owners, and certainly we have them in our PUDs for people to abide by. So as we go forward with these developments, we encourage those who would be developers and owners, they would also help us to address some of those fears that we have on what would happen in some of these workforce housing developments. And I would like to also applaud Jamie and the LMO committee for the work that they have done to get us this far down the road. And I do support this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes. I also echo my fellow commissioners, Mr. Perry and Mr. Stevens, with the fact that this can reduce traffic on the island, and it really will go, could go a long way to encouraging diversity of age and population on the island, which is a strength in the long run. But I don't want to be remiss to say that the township staff has really done a great job researching this, looking into every detail that we've brought up, and can't thank you enough. That's that.
Thank you, Leslie.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, as I said once before, it's just a very impressive piece of work. And I do agree with those that are saying that this will help in terms of the diversity of our population. And I'm struck by the number of times that our plan document talks about the need to do that, the age groups and the rest. So this doesn't only meet immediate requirements, but I think as we go into the future, it'll give us something to guide us. And finally, the thing I really like about it is it is still flexible. It leaves room for the LMO community to, or committee, to look at project by project and delve into the questions that have been asked today even deeper. So we always have that flexibility going forward. Great work.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Scanlon?
I would only add that it's been good work all around toward a worthy goal, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Alfred?
Teresa, about one more thing. There were a number of citizen comments about Beach City Road spa area. Jamie, have you responded to the people? Or what did you tell them? Or what did you tell them?
I have responded to every email and phone call that I have received, with the exception of the most recent ones. I received a few from the spa that I have not responded to, but I plan to today. But everyone that has called me has had a discussion with me and got an answer to their concerns and questions, whether it alleviated their concern or not, for the most part that it did. But there is still some concern in the Beach City Road Mitchellville area about the amount of development that could happen out there. And I will continue to discuss with those property owners to see if we can alleviate their concerns.
Thank you, Stephen.
Mr. Theodore?
No additional comments. Again, great input from everybody. And again, kudos to the town for their hard work on pulling this all together. So, great job.
I will bring it back to the table. And, you know, I am very, very pleased with all of the input from the commissioners, the input from the community, the questions that have been answered. And one just needs to look around the community to see the empty storefronts and the businesses that have closed because, number one, we're in an unusual time. But even before that, because folks could not get enough individuals to work, they couldn't operate. And you reach a point where the public is just not going to pay a higher premium for that privilege. And they move to Bluffton, or they close up shop. And, you know, this is a wonderful alternative, and all of you have brought up the fact that this just isn't about service employees. It's about teachers. It's about nurses. It's about pharmacists. It's about other healthcare providers that would fall into this category. And, you know, all the diversity issues that have been raised. So at this point, I would welcome a motion to move this item forward to council or a committee of council?
They're moved.
Okay, Michael?
I have a second.
Leslie, seconds? Okay, we have a motion and a second to move this recommendation to the town council. And Teresa, would you please call the roll? And Les, Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
And Mr. Christian?
Approve. We thank you all for your hard work on this item. And we will move this on to the, the next step in the process. And at this point, we are at the staff reports. And the first up, and hopefully he's in the, in the batting cage, is Mr. Liggett. And we need to tee this up. The CIP Committee met last, probably just before the pandemic hit. And we really didn't look at this document in any significant way for a long period of time. And Scott needs to go over this. This is kind of a living document that we have a priority list. And as we go through it, items drop off and new items come on. And we thought it was appropriate to have Scott tee this up again and kind of enlighten the commissioners on where we are and which projects are moving forward and which projects have been completed. So Scott, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Good morning to you and the rest of the commission. I trust that everybody can at least hear me, if not see me. The principal purpose of my remarks here this morning is to alert the full commission that I, with the support of the Planning Commission CIP Committee, will be bringing forward the committee's recommendation for fiscal 2021 priority projects. And we have targeted the Planning Commission's meeting scheduled for September 2nd to bring this item forward. And as you mentioned, for those that may not be aware, the committee, as chaired by Mr. Theodore, was able to fully execute their duties prior to the declaration of the state of emergency here back in March. And in fact, the final committee meeting may have been one of the last public meetings that occurred prior to everything changing. Staff did pursue a, what I would describe as a truncated budget review and approval process with council in May, realizing at the time that there would be the need for potential budget amendments to be brought forward during the fiscal year if we were to continue to pursue some of the town's goals and objectives as we saw them. And so the time is right, as these budget amendment needs continue to exist, to bring forward that recommendation of the committee in hopes of getting Planning Commission action prior to town council, having an opportunity to review these budget amendments, which, the first of which anyway, could occur as soon as September 15th. And so today's remarks from my perspective, as I mentioned, just to alert you all that this is coming down the pike. And I look forward to getting into as much detail, really for all of our projects, those which are under construction here now, those which appear to be emerging and we would like a position on the Planning Commission's standpoint of priority for the current year that we are in. And I'm happy, I don't really have anything more than that to say. I don't want to get into my briefing prematurely. If there are any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them though. But I look forward to the opportunity here in a couple of weeks to share the work of the committee.
And Scott, the, the process will be that at a future Planning Commission meeting, we will have a formal presentation of the items on the, on the CIP or the recommended items.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to facilitate that. Like I said, I look forward to the help of the committee. But the intent, for those of you who have done this with me for, for any amount of time, expect to see the same form and format of documents that you've seen come forward in the past, namely the, the capital projects listed by priority in recommended priority order by the committee. And we can walk through the, the process that was taken to arrive at that list.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And there, there is no action required by the commission today. This is just a, an update on the process and what we'll be looking forward to in the future. But just in case there are questions, why don't we go through the roll? And Teresa, would you ask each of the commissioners if they have a question or a comment for Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First, we have Mr. Perry.
No question at this time.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, just one quick question, Scott. Has the pandemic affected any of the priority of some of the projects or changed any of them? You don't have to go into great detail today, but I just wonder how we've been affected by all of this.
The effect, if there is one, I think potentially has to do with the availability of funds that we may be able to recommend allocation for council's consideration. Looking over our shoulder, there have been no projects that we have purposely delayed or deferred as a result of the pandemic. Frankly, we have been as busy as ever trying to execute projects. We have had some trickle down insofar as supply chain issues that some of our contractors have experienced. But, but the impact, I think, has to do with the ability to recommend funding for any or all of them, once we establish the priorities.
Thank you.
Ms. McGowan?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil?
No questions. I look forward to the committee treatment of this.
Mr. Scanlon?
Unmute yourself, Michael.
No questions at this time. I look forward to our future meeting where this will be discussed.
Mr. Alfred?
No questions today, Scott.
Mr. Theodore?
I'd like to thank Scott for all of his help to where we are today and kind of bringing us back up to speed with, after we were interrupted by this pandemic. And thank the committee for all their input. I would add to what Scott was saying is, I think Scott would be in agreement. We had some great meetings at the beginning of the year, and we had a roomful of public that was giving us some input. And so I think we were able to incorporate some of that into our recommendations as well. So, and this document is really kind of representing current projects and then just trying to map out what some of the future projects would be in the upcoming couple of years. So thank you, Scott, for all your guidance.
Yes, sir. You're very welcome. I'm excited as well. I thought the list of candidate projects was very exciting, and I look forward to the meeting on the second.
Thank you all for your comments. Scott, as always, thank you for your hard work. And just for those listening in, the public, Todd Theodore chairs the CIP Committee, Leslie is the vice chair, Stephen Alfred is on that committee as well as Mark O'Neil. And they will be meeting prior to our Planning Commission meeting to discuss this in more detail, provide public input, and then bring it back to the commission at a future date. And, you know, thank you again for your hard work and Scott for your, for your update. All right, moving along. Taylor Lad, who has been moving the R Plan process forward along with Jennifer Ray, is warming up and she is going to give us an update on R Plan. And this is going to be the second of two information sessions. And remind the commissioners, we are going to have a joint workshop with the town council in the very near future. And I'm sure Taylor was going to bring that up with some specifics. So Taylor, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So good morning, everyone. Just bear with me a moment while I get the PowerPoint pulled up here. It disappeared again. Where'd it go? All right. There we go. Now we're in business. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners, and welcome to the Planning Commission. Mr. Alfred, good to see you. I'm Taylor Lad, Senior Planner and Project Lead for R Plan. As the chairman said, this presentation is the second of two information sessions to introduce our plan. The first one I presented at a Planning Commission last month. My goal with these sessions is to provide the Planning Commission, Town Council, and Island Community with an overview of our plan and what to expect as it proceeds through the adoption process. For today's session, I will cover the plan's contents, layouts, and structure in an overview of Sections 3, 4, 5, and 7 of our plan. Now, these are pretty robust sections, so I appreciate your, your time as I work through this. And I look forward to hearing your comments afterwards and as we proceed to the workshop next week. The draft of our plan is now available for public review and comment. A link to the document is available on the town's R Plan webpage. In the last session, I reviewed our plan's genesis, purpose, and process, starting with the R Future Project and development of the vision for the plan. This is all covered extensively in Section 1. I discussed the relevance of the state mandated elements, which are reviewed in Section 2, 4, and 5 of the plan. And since we no longer have a chapter devoted to each element for the presentation of goals and strategies, a very important aspect of how our plan is structured has been to tie the elements into the core values. I'll be going over this in more detail shortly. Last time, I also briefly discussed the seven core values and their overarching contribution to how our plan is structured and how it was developed through community participation. So again, our plan is comprised of a front matter, five main sections, and two reference sections. It is written so that each section flows and complements the other, but any section is also able to stand alone. In the first session last month, I covered Sections 1, 2, and 6. And today, I'm reviewing the rest. Section 3 is comprised of the seven core values. Sections 4 and 5 covers park and recreation and priority investment. And these are the only two elements that are being traditionally addressed by our plan. The rest of the elements are in Section 2, as you recall. First, let's review these very important definitions. The three main sections of our plan that I'm reviewing today include the Goals, Strategies, and Tactics, which is where the rubber meets the road in a comprehensive plan. The Goals present our aspirations and desired outcomes for the next 20 years. The Strategies are the plans of action for each goal. And some strategies have tactics to provide further guidance as specific tools or action items. Together, these provide the framework for the town and meet state requirements for the plan. This is very much a product of dedicated community work through the time our work groups devoted to help piece layers of ideas, knowledge, and experience together into salient aspirations and plans of action, which all of you as participants in the work groups through this process are very familiar with. Section 3, our core values. This section houses the core value chapters and a bulk of the Goals, Strategies, and Tactics for our plan. Each chapter has a similar organization. The overview presents the big ideas and general meaning for the core value based on workgroup input and the vision plan. The Key Ideas section discusses the themes and issues or opportunities identified through the community engagement process. The workgroups played a large role in developing these ideas and identifying challenge areas through their interactive engagement activities. This is presented as bulleted lists of key ideas shaping each core value and a list of identified opportunities or statements of need. These tie in with much of what each core values' goals cover and essentially serve as the foundation for the goal development for each core value. The Goals and Strategies discussions in Sections 4 and 5 also follow this format. This is the typical layout for the presentation of the Goals, Strategies, and Tactics for each chapter. The Goals for each chapter are presented on the left-facing page with a keyword header for each. The Strategies and Tactics are then organized on following pages by goal. As we go through this presentation, you may see some overlap with these keywords as I present each chapter. The elements represented by each goal are keyed in the left margin next to the goals. Much like the rest of the plan document, the margins contain supporting information such as definitions and cross-references. Eventually, these cross-references will be hyperlinked for our interactive PDF version of the document. At the end of each chapter, this matrix communicates the relationship of the elements for each core value. The matrix is here for several reasons. One, to provide a snapshot of how each core value aligns with the state mandated elements. Two, to further strengthen this correlation of the core values with the elements. And three, to serve as a reference for searching the core values by element. The elements are listed across the top. The goals are listed on the left by number and keyword with the respective strategies. And the matrix of element symbols shows where they overlap. To read this matrix, find the goal or strategy number that you're interested in, such as the Economy Strategy 1.2 highlighted here. Follow the line across to the symbols for the related elements. In the example, this is the Transportation Goal for Economy, to continue to improve access to and around Hilton Head Island. Strategy 1.2 states, "Consider transportation options for alternate means of access to the island." This strategy addresses the transportation element because it is about transportation and access, and priority investment because projects or policy that comes, that could come out of the strategy might entail capital improvements. These relationships were identified and vetted by several staff who have expertise or in-depth familiarity with the elements and core values. It has been a very important step in the process to ensure these relationships are apparent throughout the document. This is the Core Values Wheel, which is in our plan Figure 3.1. This graphic breaks down in simple terms the goals for each core value using the keywords. So you can really quickly see what all the keywords are and reference kind of what the topic is for all of the goals that are covered in Section 3. To demonstrate the extent of the relationship between the core values and elements, I've created this version of the wheel where the darker goal wedges address the most elements. So for example, the Ideals of Excellence Goal currently addresses nine of the 10 elements. Next to it, moving clockwise, the first goal wedge for environment is the goal about solid waste. It only addresses two elements, so it is a lighter color gray. Really, the key takeaway, if this is confusing, which it might be, the key takeaway is that there are no blank wedges. All the elements are represented and distributed throughout the plan. I will add, in light of today's workforce housing discussion, the housing element is addressed by all the core values. With that, let's start looking at the core values. The chapters are, in our plan, are arranged in the same order that they are presented in the R Future Vision Plan, so that there is consistency between the vision and the implementation in the comprehensive plan. For Chapter 1 Excellence, according to the community, the island is a unique and beautiful place that is worth protecting. Through this entire process, it has been evident the town and community seek and expect excellence. The emphasis for this core value is community-focused and in celebration of island history, cultural and socioeconomic diversity, and natural resources. So excellence for Hilton Head Island needed to be defined. This was extensively discussed during the R Plan process and accomplished through establishing our ideals of excellence. which are shown here. The ideals lay the groundwork for the island's brand in concert with the core values and serve to define excellence for the town and the island community. They provide accountability to ensure a high quality of life for all residents and visitors is available and achievable into the future. The ideals are categorized into three focus areas: Our Place, Our People, and Our Planning and Process. The one goal for excellence is to adopt and pursue the ideals as a way to sustain excellence for all of these three focus areas. The respective strategies and tactics provide further specifics pertaining to implementation of the ideals using these categories. The one goal for relentless pursuit of excellence is supported with 25 strategies and 14 tactics. Chapter 2, Environment. Environmental sustainability is foundational for the island community. While the vision for our plan expands the definition of sustainability to include social and economic factors, this core value focuses on the environmental arm of sustainability. Goals and strategies present new ideas and ways to continue taking a resilient approach to address concerns growing over our current and future conditions and environmental impacts. The resulting goal keywords demonstrate a focus on environmental topics. These support some of the key ideas and opportunities that came out of discussions about the environment, such as building on ecotourism, find new ways to use vacant commercial space, preserving the island's natural environment, and having a plan for adaptation and resilience to future environmental concerns or natural disasters. Redefining environmental sustainability is comprised of seven goals, 35 strategies, and 48 tactics. Chapter 3, Economy. Destination tourism and retirement are two of the biggest drivers for the island economy, but changes in generational or situational preferences for travel, living, and work are affecting many aspects of our economy. There is a renewed drive to build on the current strengths in the island economy and show that the island is a place for people of all ages, cultures, and income levels to visit or live and work. The development of the goals of the economy core value are grounded in key ideas such as ways to attract young professionals and families so that more people can live and work on the island, continuing to leverage local intellectual capital and volunteerism, which engages the retirement community, growth in the health and technology sectors, and improving transit and housing. Revitalizing and modernizing the economy is presented as six goals, 28 strategies, and 28 tactics. Chapter 4, Inclusive. Fully grasping the vision of our plan entails addressing socioeconomic trends of present-day Hilton Head Island that could be more sustainable and equitable. The inclusive core value takes a closer look at these challenges and considers education, health, quality of life, the arts, culture, and recreation. It encourages the island's progression into the future with a multi-dimensional, equitable, and diverse society. So what is multi-dimensional? We have to find it for our plan as being inclusive of all levels and types of income, culture, age ranges, familial preference, race, gender, ethnicity, ability, life stages, and interests. Equity, or equitable, is used in this chapter to imply balance, fairness, and equality. Some of the key ideas to come out of the process for inclusive include fostering high standards for education and healthcare, imagining new venues for the arts and entertainment, continuing regional partnerships, preserving historic sites, community development, expanding tourism into new sectors, and access and mobility enhancements. Fostering an inclusive, multi-dimensional community includes eight goals, 36 strategies, and 10 tactics, and subsequently, the Parks and Recreation effort with our plan is part of the inclusive core value. Chapter 5, Connected. Achieving a high status of connectivity for the island entails investigation into the many facets that create community. By extension, the Connected Chapter holistically addresses all the core values through physical connectivity in the built environment, the human connection with others, and through social capital, the natural environment, and recreational and cultural experiences. What is community fabric? For our plan, this is the many environmental, social, and economic characteristics, interests, qualities, and values that are important to building trust and binding a community of people and places together. Community unification with a commitment for progressive change is important to the future growth and attraction of living, working on, and visiting the island. This is addressed through some of the key ideas that carry this core value forward, including collaborative planning and partnership, technology that serves the community and helps to build connections, connecting the built environment, investing in quality-of-life initiatives, and taking an innovative approach to bridge spatial and societal separations. Building a connected and collaborative community fabric presents four goals, 21 strategies, and 17 tactics. Chapter 6, Regional. The island's shape and size control available space for development and land-based growth, while environmental, social, and economic influences do extend beyond the physical controls. And taking a closer look at the region, one can see the economy, workforce, and population influences do expand beyond Bluffton and Southern Beaufort County and Savannah. This is well outside of the encapsulated environment that the island can seem to be at times. For these reasons, the issues the island faces as it looks forward to 2040 require a regional perspective with regional solutions and an openness to continue and expand collaboration with regional partners. Some of the opportunities identified for key areas for this core value include having a strong connection to Bluffton for collaboration, transportation improvements, partnerships across state lines or political boundaries, establishing relationships with other municipalities, and continued and strengthened regional initiatives. Expanding to embrace an integrated regional focus presents five goals, 17 strategies, and 19 tactics. Chapter 7, Infrastructure. The increasing popularity the island has and will generate increased demands on its infrastructure. Climate change, advancements in technology, and economic residential growth impacted as well. Developing sustainable solutions to address these demands and adapt to change requires taking an innovative and holistic look at infrastructure. Innovation will be in the ability to discern and measure its right-sized infrastructure for the island. So what is meant by right-sized? Well, right-sized infrastructure anticipates future or trending changes in community needs or interests, in level of service capabilities, in capacity demands, or in methods of delivery of services. This approach to infrastructure is intended to preserve and enhance island character. The ideas for infrastructure include continuing to prioritize health, safety, and welfare, addressing advances in technology, traffic, consideration for population growth and tour demands, maintaining best-in-class town services and facilities, and fostering more and diverse housing offerings. An innovative approach to create right-sized infrastructure is our most robust chapter with seven goals, 40 strategies, and 75 tactics. The Recreation Element was added to the Town's Comprehensive Plan in 2005. In our plan, it has been replaced by Section 4, Our Parks and Recreation. The Our Plan vision for the Town's Parks and Recreation is that Hilton Head Island is recognized for best-in-class parks and recreation by building diversity of recreational arts and quality-of-life offerings for all residents and visitors. A Parks and Rec Master Plan was initiated in 2019 as a priority of Town Council in concert with our plan. This Master Plan will be adopted with our plan and is appended to the document. The purpose of the Master Plan has been to evaluate the Town, the Town and Hilton Head Island's public parks and recreation system and to submit recommendations designed to increase the level of service across the community for the next 10 years. The purpose of Section 4 is to tie the Master Plan into the Our Plan Parks and Rec Element. The Parks and Recreation Task Group participated in the development of Section 4 through the Town's 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan Initiative. The task group with the Parks and Rec Commission were instrumental in development of the Master Plan and its incorporation into our plan. The Master Plan is Part 1 of a larger process towards improving the island's park and rec system. Section 4 presents an overview of the island's Parks and Recreation System, infrastructure, and programs based on analyses and research from the Master Plan, and includes goals, strategies, and tactics for parks and recreation. It also has a historic overview of the Town's parks development and the Master Plan's recommendations with town action items. The Goals and Strategies for our Parks and Recreation were developed by the Parks and Rec Master Plan consultant in concert with the task group, Parks and Rec Commission, and public input. These address opportunities for our Parks and Rec system identified through the Master Plan process. The wheel on the right here shows where and the extent for how the core values relate to Parks and Rec. Select key ideas and opportunities identified for Parks and Recreation include seeking new methods for funding and development of new parks and maintenance and operations, providing more public access to water, consolidating parkland ownership and maintenance responsibilities, some of which is already underway with the county, continually seeking ways to ensure the island's special needs, residents, and visitors have equitable access, and the Town's multi-use pathway system. The Parks and Rec section presents eight goals, 20 strategies, and four tactics. Starting on Page 263 of our plan is a list of Parks and Recreation-specific action items for town officials to consider. These action items officially convey the findings and final recommendations in the Master Plan that will best serve the interest of the town for current and future park planning. These action items are the culmination of extensive community analysis, public input, expert recommendation, and synthesis by staff. They will be a starting point for the staff in parks planning process. Next, we have Section 5, Our Priority Investment. In compliance with the South Carolina Priority Investment Act, the Town has developed this element in our plan's Section 5. This presents an analysis of the funds available for public infrastructure and facilities, recommendations, projects to use the funds. The purpose of this section is to tie the capital improvement needs identified in our plan and other town-adopted plans to forecasted revenues for the current upcoming fiscal years. As such, this is the only section that did not have direct community engagement apart from public meetings held for the Town's budget or CIP process. Much of the content for this section is derived from the past Priority Investment Element in the Town's Comprehensive Plan and details about the CIP in the Town's budget documentation. The Goals, Strategies, and Tactics for Priority Investment do also very much come from and play into the core values, so there is correlation with community engagement in this regard. They also address ways the Town's priority investments and capital improvements can continue to align with the vision in these core values over the next 20 years. You can see this correlation with the wheel on the right that shows the extent to which the core values relate to priority investment. So the goals for priority investment, as shown by the keywords here, are focused on the Town's capital improvement program. Some of the select key ideas and opportunities include regional collaboration, engaging the island's citizens in the CIP process to ensure community needs are met and considered, continuing to explore recommendations from new and older adopted plans and technology. Priority Investments Section 5 has five goals and 17 strategies. Based on the breadth of community input received throughout the process, recurring themes emerged. These 10 themes from throughout our plan are representative of the Town and Island community values: Adopt and pursue our ideals of excellence; Protect and preserve the natural environment; Manage evolving growth while maintaining the island's unique aesthetic; Provide exceptional quality-of-life offerings in arts, culture, and recreation with best-in-class facilities and programming; Develop creative revenue sources to fund the delivery of capital services, maintenance, operations, and projects meeting the needs of the town, residents, and visitors; Recognize and respect and promote multi-dimensional diversity on the island; Promote efficient and secure public services to meet current and future needs; Plan for and mitigate the effects of climate change, environmental or health concerns, and natural disasters; View the region as a partner, not a competitor; Foster a healthy, self-sustaining community that encourages economic, cultural, and demographic diversity. Our last section to take a quick look at today is Section 7, the Appendix. 7.1 is comprised of a comprehensive list of the Town's adopted plans. Many of these plans are updated on a rolling basis and are incorporated in conjunction with the development of planning and policy initiatives that are filtered through and grounded in our plan. All of the adopted plans that the Town has currently active are available on the Town's website. The Our Plan Guidebook, which is currently being developed, will be included in the appendix, as well as available as a standalone document. The Guidebook presents a snapshot of our plan's content, structure, and key themes. The guide is intended to help with interpreting the purpose and intent of the plan and to present its content in an abbreviated format. This will be a Cliff Notes, if you will. The Core Value and Element Relationship Tables are collected into Section 7.2B as one-stop-shop for reviewing these relationships. And finally, the Vision and Strategic Action Plan, which defines our state-mandated vision for our plan, is included in the appendix, as well as the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is foundational for Section 4. Finally, this is our Path to Adoption Timeline. I am keeping the community updated about these meetings and times through the Our Plan Facebook page, and the Town's web calendar is the best place to go to check for the most up-to-date meeting information and to access agenda packets. The public is invited to provide feedback about our plan through the Open Town Hall Portal, which can be found on Town's web page. Each of these meetings will have an open Town Hall forum, open for comments, and the opportunity for citizens to sign up to call in during a meeting. The development team met August 12 at 2:00 p.m. and made a recommendation for adoption for the Comprehensive Plan Committee. The next Our Plan meeting will be the Comprehensive Plan Committee on August 25 at 9:00 a.m. They will make a recommendation for the Planning Commission. Their agenda packet is currently available and includes the development team's comments and staff response with suggestions for edits. This meeting will be followed by a Planning Commission workshop with Town Council that the Chairman mentioned at the beginning of this presentation. There will be meeting to discuss the document and its contents. The meeting will be August 26 at 9:00 a.m. Finally, in September and October, staff anticipates official action will be taken by the Planning Commission and Town Council for adoption of the plan. All right, this concludes my presentation. Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity to present a preliminary overview of our plan for the Commissioners, any attending council, the island community. I look forward to working with all of you through the rest of the process. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Taylor, for that comprehensive review, and obviously, this document, which started several years ago, has moved through several processes, and as Taylor mentioned, the development team, which Michael and Mark O'Neill was now on the Comprehensive Planning Committee, looked at, and I believe Judd Karstais, who is the Chair of that committee, is going to be present as well when we go over this with the Town Council. as well when we go over this with the Town Council. But the next move will be the Comprehensive Planning Committee to take a look at this particular item. That is, committee is chaired by Mike Scanlon. Alan Perry is the vice chair. Amon Exoficio and Mark O'Neill is also a member of that committee. They will take a look at it. And Taylor has welcomed comments and tweaks as we move this along. And what we'd like to do is get all those comments and tweaks before it comes to a final consideration by the Planning Commission. So if you do have a comment, please provide that to Taylor. And at this time, we're going to go, we don't need any action at this point. This was an update. We will see this document again after the Comprehensive Planning Committee has a bite at it. But do want to give each of the commissioners an opportunity to weigh in if they have any questions. So Teresa, if you would go through the commissioners, please.
Also, just really quickly, you can wait until the workshop if there's other things that are more in-depth things that you would like to discuss at that time. So we can take quick comments now, but definitely the workshop would be a great place to bring those things up as well. Sorry, go ahead, Teresa.
Thank you. Mr. Perry.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Taylor, again, you've heard it from so many people, but I have to reiterate it. You really and your team have done a wonderful job with this document. It's great to see that the first chapter, Excellence, is really coming to life today through the R Plan, through the workforce, affordable workforce housing product. So we're already starting to see things come to life, and I think that's a great testament to the plan for the next 20 years as we continue to move forward. So again, great job, and it's easy to read, it's inclusive, and I think it really sets us on the right track. So, thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Yep. My comments are brief. I was just happy to see some of the work that I was able to participate in, and I commend Taylor on her work as well. And I know it was a challenge sometimes getting everybody in the community engaged with our different schedules, and I feel like there were times when, you know, they might have been a little discouraged, but I think that the final product is looking good, and I was happy to play some small part in that. Good work.
Ms. McGowan.
My only comment is, this document really becomes a framework for the Planning Commission as echoing Mr. Perry's comments. And I can see it's very easy to work your way through and see what the policy is. Was that? Was my mic on? All right. So thank you, thank you to the staff for lots of hard work.
Mr. O'Neill.
Just to mention, I've had the opportunity, right from the Vision Project Management Steering Committee to being on the work groups, to the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission, and all of those places, I've seen interaction with the staff where comments are made and subsequently incorporated where appropriate, and that shows a staff that's willing to listen and change. And I particularly appreciate, after the last Development Committee meeting where we had opportunity to make comments, the upgrading a little bit in the wording of the health and healthcare of the community. I'm a bit prejudiced, but we have a hospital here that if we didn't have, we'd have a different story on the healthcare side. So I appreciate the beefing up of the plan in that regard. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
I look forward to the two meetings next week with the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and then again with Town Council. I would just ask the commissioners to forward any thoughts and comments you have to Taylor, and we look forward to taking this on next week.
Mr. Alfred.
Nice job, Taylor. No comments.
Mr. Theodore.
Just again, reconfirm what everybody has said. And Taylor, great job. I know this was kind of uncharted territory of how you kind of go from the state-mandated process to put this into a user-friendly document. That's quite a, quite a task that has been accomplished, and it's great to see how the public's been involved in this process, and look forward to actually just getting into a digital format, like you said, so that there's the links and all that. That'll really help this document be more user-friendly. So look forward to the next steps and seeing this document get adopted. So, good job.
Thank you, Todd. And I'll, you know, close the comment session to, you know, reiterate what my fellow commissioners have indicated, the wonderful job that staff has done putting this together and encapsulating all of the public comments. And, you know, this is indeed been a journey, which we're still on, but we're coming hopefully to the end of that journey where this can be adopted. And, you know, this document will be used as a litmus test for all of the LMO items that may come before the commission or before the town. So it is an extremely important document and will remain significant for many, many years to come. The one item I would like Taylor to touch on today, every once in a while, we get a comment that, you know, what about a vision? And Taylor, would you speak to the place where the vision is located in the R Plan document, so we can kind of quell that from the get-go and indicate that there is indeed a vision within that living document?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, we have a vision because the state outline for what the requirements are in a comprehensive plan does require that you have a vision. So that is kind of where the, our future project, I don't know if it started out with that intent, but it certainly became realized through incorporation into our plan as the vision for the community for the next 20 years. So it is in section 1.2, starting on page five, and that's a subsection called our vision. And so really, reading through all of section one will give you the kind of start-to-finish look at how this was done, why we have it, what's important about it, what role the vision plays in it, and as well, what role the community played in developing it. So if you really want to know the story behind our plan, then read through section one. That'll be a good indication. But if you just want to hone in on the vision, then that's definitely 1.2.
Thank you, Taylor, for that. And with that, we appreciate your comments, Taylor, and we look forward to working with you at the CIP level, and then again, on the joint meeting with Town Council in a workshop setting. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Moving on to our next item on our agenda, which is commission business. And, you know, I've mentioned a couple of the members of the subcommittees of the Planning Commission where most of the work takes place. And I just want to, for the public acknowledgement, and for the sake of those who are on who may view this at a future date, the Land Management or the LMO Committee is chaired by Leslie McGowan. Todd Theodore is the vice chair. Mike Scanlon is also on that committee. We are shy one commissioner, so when we do find that the Town Council appoints an additional commissioner, we will have that individual on the Land Management Ordinance Committee. Comprehensive Planning Committee, we reiterated this before, Mike Scanlon will chair that, Alan Perry, vice chair, Amon Exoficio, and Mark O'Neill. Rules of Procedures Committee is going to be chaired by Alan Perry. Levon Stevens will be vice chair, and Stephen Alfred will also be on that committee. And the Capital Improvement Projects Committee, Todd Theodore will chair that committee, Leslie McGowan will vice chair that committee, Steve Alfred is on the committee, as well as Mark O'Neill. And, you know, the Gullah Geechee Land Cultural Preservation Task Force, Levon chairs that committee, and we've lost one of our committee members on that, Caroline McVitty. Todd is also on that committee, but the remaining members are not members of the Planning Commission. And next year, when Todd turns out and when Levon turns out, we will be left with no Planning Commission representation on that committee. And Levon and I had a conversation about that, and we need to pass along to Town Council that those were specific appointments by Town Council, and we would need Planning Commission representation moving forward. So Levon, you and I have a task in front of us to make sure that we bring that to the attention of the Town Council.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And there is one other committee, a nominating committee, and that committee nominates the chair and vice chair, and that is a single project committee, and that will be appointed later on in the year. And, you know, that ends, unless there are any other staff reports or staff comments. Levon, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Just a reminder that we do have a Gullah Geechee Task Force meeting on Monday, if you're available. We'd like to have you all tune in. I believe it's at 1:00. We're making some great progress there, so hopefully we'll have a good meeting.
Thank you for that, Levon. Okay. Hearing that there is no other business, we've had a robust and lengthy agenda today, and we appreciate everyone's patience and hard work. We've accomplished much today. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Okay, Levon? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.